Counsel? Anybody ready?
Yep.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the order, a regular meeting of the City Council of Satellite Beach, April 17th, 2019, approximately 7:00 PM. Please join Councilwoman Gibson for a moment of silence and the pledge.
Please rise for a moment of silence. And the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we move on to Agenda Item 3, Agenda Item 9, Discuss Take Action on Media Relation Policy, is withdrawn. Okay, with the counsel?
Yep.
Moving on to Agenda Item 3, Citizens' Comments. I'll take citizens of the Satellite Beach city limits first.
Diane Douglas. Yeah, Diane Douglas. I just want to say thank you for your swift action on SB 1460. I wanted to share some comments after I told people that I had been to the council meeting and they said, "Thank you." Everybody just said, "Thank you," across the board. Dog owners said, "The beach is not a public restroom." And the other dog owner said, "Even if you pick it up, you could still get ringworm and I don't want to get foot fungus." Everybody was concerned for the health and safety. A former dog owner said, "Thank you, thank you. I'm so glad you said something about this." And one person who's not a dog owner said, "To claim your dog is a service dog is so disrespectful against service dogs." So I just wanted to share some citizens' comments. They didn't come, but I'm bringing that with you, with me, to share with you. So, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
And Diane Douglas says, "Thank you a thousand times."
Thank you for bringing it to us.
Yes, you're welcome.
Citizens' comments still open?
Dana Williman, Carriage Park. I've got a few things I want to address. I'm not very pleased with the furnishment of public records lately. I've got some concerns, first of which, I made a request for police radio tapes to the police department and this was a verbal request at the window. And two weeks later, I still hadn't heard back from anybody regarding this request. So I sent an email just to make sure it was on the record because I was made aware that these tapes are only kept for 90 days. I kind of felt like time was critical here, so I wanted to get it on the record. And I still didn't get any confirmation email back. It took me CCing the media and the clerk of courts before I got any confirmation that a records request was made and received. After that, I was told that I was going to have to make a $150 deposit for up to five hours of man time for the redaction and review process of this records request. I understand that, you know, the redaction is necessary, but I ended up being billed for four hours and nine minutes for an 18-minute recording. It's very, very odd. I, you know, I don't want to speculate, but it seems like somebody sat there listening to an empty tape, like silence, just for three hours out of this process. I can assume that it may take 45 minutes to redact an 18-minute recording, but not four hours and nine minutes. When I was emailed about a refund for this request, the balance remaining on the deposit that I had to make, someone, Sherri Driggers, told me that I would have to fill out a W-9 form, which is an application to be a vendor for the city. And at the very top of this form, it says that it's for vendors providing a product or service to the city in excess of $600. My refund was supposed to be $50. Something is not right here. I went back there to get another public record and I saw something in a box on the wall marked with a name that I have an injunction against, this person who has this name. And I thought it might be interesting to the case that's, you know, moving forward in appellate court that I find out what this public record is that's sitting in the outbox waiting to be given to the person who I have the injunction against or stalking. So I asked, and Sherri Driggers got very rude with me, told me it was none of my business and that I was snooping around. Now, I'm not sure if the city is familiar with public records laws, but anything visible to the public from a public area of a public building is, in fact, public record. I'm questioning seriously whether there needs to be some more training, some more, I don't know, but it's not right. For somebody to be rude like that when they are not, in fact, correct, that was a public record, I was entitled to it, I was told, "No, I was not allowed to have it." Moving on, do you guys know how to cite records exemptions? Because I've made several requests and I've had several exemptions cited. First, it was just, "Oh, that's departmental use only, you can't have that." There was no statutory exemption cited. I asked for a signed piece of paper, no statutory exemption was cited. I came back and I asked for a statutory exemption. And Adam just copied and pasted a piece of law into the, no, you can't do that. You have to cite rationale for why you are citing this exemption. More training is necessary, obviously. I honestly don't think we need an aggressive media policy. I think what we need is better handling of the media and records requests. Thank you.
Thank you. Mic still open?
Dale Abrams, the resident of the CRA. Good evening. This is Holy Week. I hope we're all praying for the people in France after what they just went through with their church. And are we on tonight?
Of course.
You two? Good evening, citizens. I want to talk about the last meeting. Two meetings where we didn't have the video. We didn't have the video for the CRA, we didn't have the video for the city council meeting. Thank God we had audio, okay? Now, you know, I know we just went out and spent $15,000 on a video to teach people how to use the recycling bin. When are we going to get this right? I mean, a lot of people look at those YouTube videos. Why can't we address this situation? Okay? That's all I'm asking, is address it and get it, you know, repair it, do whatever you need to do.
Isn't it working?
Is it working tonight?
It should be working tonight, yes, because that was something that we definitely, trust me, I wanted to address it too. So we, the, our YouTube person added the digital video people in and so it looks like it's working tonight. Last week, I knew I was having a problem when I started the meeting, but tonight it looks like it's working.
I think if you have a problem, I think you might want to tell the citizens because I know you don't know me, but soon you will get to know me because I am a public records request person also. I have all the YouTube videos that we've ever done, and actually, there was a time where we didn't have YouTube videos and they brought the YouTube videos in, correct? So anyway, let's get it right because it is important as far as that's concerned. And then, I just, I'm very upset about the way that older gentleman was handled at the last meeting. I had a long conversation with him outside and it's very disturbing, the way he was handled. And I hope going forward that you think long and hard because my question is, how do we let a code violation go for 12 years? You, Mr. Montanaro, stated that you were on the board at one point, okay? How does it get that long?
I wasn't on the board. I was the council liaison to the board, so it's just record.
Okay, okay, excuse me. But how does it, how does someone, how do you allow something like that to happen that long? And I did go by this property. I had to look it up myself because we just said it's on Lee, but nobody told us exactly where it was on Lee. And, you know, I just think it's wrong that it went that long. So I hope you really think, I know this is going to come back to the council pertaining to this issue, and I know, and Ron stated this at the last meeting, I have all the documentation on what went on on Shell Street with two properties after the '04 hurricanes, okay? So, you know, this old man's got issues. He's got things happening in his life. And I think he's owned the property for a long time, so I'm hoping that you will work with him to get to where he needs to get to as far as that's concerned. Anyway, Happy Easter and also Happy Passover. We do know that Passover is starting, I think it's on Sunday, I believe, or Saturday. I think this year it's the same. Well, we should learn about these things because we do have a Jewish community and in our community, okay? So I think it's important for you to know these things. Thank you.
Courtney, do you want to address the House?
Well, I mean, I think if people would want to know why it wasn't addressed, they need to talk to the property owner because that, we have very strong property rights in the state of Florida and Chapter 182 is the code enforcement chapter and the property has been fined every day for the last 12 years and there's $300,000 plus fines sitting on that property right now. So the property owners of Lee Avenue, I can assure you, are not happy about the fact that it sat there that long and neither is the city, but we have multiple records of us trying to contact that property owner to no avail.
Courtney, could you ask the city attorney to explain to the public what a quasi-judicial board is? Because this council had no decision at all on that property. So Jim, if you could explain what the code enforcement board was at the time, that it's its own judge and jury.
Well, basically, the statutory framework for code enforcement is in 162, Chapter 162 Florida statutes. And at the time, the city utilized the code enforcement board. We now have a magistrate, which the statute also allows for. And basically, the provisions are that the board sits to hear cases that are brought before it for alleged code violations. The property owners give a notice of the hearing based upon the address that's provided on the property praiser's website and/or the tax collector's website. And the city provides notice based on those addresses. And the hearing is then held before the board and the city presents the evidence of the violation or violations. And then the property owner is allowed to present testimony regarding whatever facts they have in response or any mitigating circumstances that they may want to bring before the board. And then based upon that evidence, the board provides, or the board makes findings regarding the existence or nonexistence of the violation. And if there's a violation found, then the board entered an order, providing for a fine to start, usually a certain period of time after the hearing to give the property owner an opportunity to again cure the violation before the fine commences. And that's basically how the process works. And the difference now is, is that instead of the board, the magistrate does those functions.
Thank you. Citizens' comments for citizens of Satellite Beach in the city limits. The mic is still open.
Ma'am, you've got to state your name up there, please. My name's Mary Carrity. You all know me from a couple of weeks ago when I told you about a stalker that your email chain set me up for. But I'm not going to start with that. I'm not going to mention that right now, other than what I just did. I'm thinking about this old fellow that the city's taken action against. As neighbors, and that's what we're all supposed to be, right? As neighbors, did anybody in those 12 or 13 years ever try and talk as a neighbor to this fellow or talked to any scout groups or church groups, charitable organizations or anything that maybe this fellow could have had a little help? He might have needed some help and nobody as neighbors thought to do that. Now, what I'm here for, you've taken off your agenda, which is an anti-first amendment plan that you guys had. Somebody, don't know who it was, I know the city manager was the one who's talking to the media about it, and to quote her from Florida Today, "Some of them had aggressive behavior, outright belligerent, rude. One reporter even hung up on the mayor." And that's a good reason to shut down the media and have aggressive media? That's not aggressive. That's frustration, maybe, but that's not aggressive. Aggressive is punching in the face. That's aggressive. Bless your heart for trying to think of a way to shut down communication. You get a big dog salary for the city manager and she's going to be the spokeswoman and all that. She needs to grow a pair. Suck it up, buttercup. Don't be so easily offended by things. Don't be scared. If somebody's aggressive, are they being aggressive or are you?
The council.
Okay, to the city manager, when she talks about being aggressive and hanging up on somebody, she perceives that as aggressive. I kind of perceive it as maybe she's a little insecure or ashamed of her position or her refusal to speak to the media. In any event, she makes lots of money in her job, well more than six figures, and she needs to start acting like a professional. If she can't handle that, she needs to go work somewhere where her delicate sensibilities are not so easily offended. A marshmallow factory, perhaps?
Ma'am, here's where I'm going to stop you at right now. By our council policies, at the podium where you're at right now, you cannot criticize employees of the city without going through the process through the city clerk.
Okay.
You're here to criticize.
Okay.
The city employer has something.
Okay.
I'm going to ask you, there is a procedure that's in place through the city clerk that you can get the procedure and follow that.
Okay.
If not, I'm not going to allow that type of.
Okay. All right. My last comment then is, in case you hadn't figured it out yet, I think the "Hold my beer while I write this new anti-first amendment" policy is foolhardy, unconstitutional, and city taxpayers will bear the burden of the costs for the legal fights that will definitely come about by trying to shut down media, whether it's big media, little media, independent media, doesn't matter. You don't shut down free speech and the free interchange of information and ideas, not in the United States.
The mic is open for citizens.
Jay Dragon, Satellite Beach. I'm a YouTube watcher, too. I think it's appalling how a small group of people come here every week and say the things that they do to you. I want to be here to thank each and every one of you for taking the time out of your day to come here and represent the city for us. Basically, just know that there are people in the city, the votes show it, that appreciate everything that you're doing. Thank you.
The mic's open. I'll open up for citizens and non-citizens at this time.
Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. So a couple of comments first about the last meeting when I wasn't allowed to speak about the old man. I go through life with a philosophy of win-win and I would encourage the city to try to find a solution that where everybody comes out ahead because people do see what goes on. The second thing is, the reason I'm recording is because I was thought I was treated rudely in the last meeting. And regarding the agenda item that was dropped, I would say that sometimes it may be that people are not always as polite because they feel that they haven't been treated with respect. And then the third thing I wanted, the reason I came tonight and I wanted to talk is, I was trying to find an email address for Mr. Dawson and I did a search on Google with his name in quotes along with plus brevard plus email. And oddly, the first listing that came up on Google was a city council regular meeting from April of 2016. So I did a Ctrl+F to look for Mr. Dawson's name in the document and because in the text of Google, it indicated that his name was in this document. And so I looked and his name was not in the document. So Google, when its spiders go and search the internet, it always makes a cased copy of the document, okay? So it has a document that is cased and then sometimes it's changed and what you actually linked to may not be the same. And oddly enough, that was this case. So I have here, which I will give you a copy of minutes from April 6, 2016, in which Mr. Dawson's name is not in this document. And then I have the cased copy from Google, which his name is in. Now, these documents are different in more than one respect. And I don't think, from what my understanding is, that, I think there's procedures to going to changing minutes. And so it raises questions. I'm going to leave these documents with you and that was my purpose of being here.
Are you talking about Walker Dawson?
Let me take it, please. Thank you. I need, I'll check. Thank you.
Sandra, are you talking about Walker Dawson with the county?
Yes. Okay.
Mike Sullivan?
Tiffany Johnson from Melbourne, Florida. I've got a packet that I'm going to pass around and I'm just going to kind of go over the reason for the packet. And the last time I was here, I missed a couple of the meetings due to schedule conflicts and traveling. But I spoke last time at this podium in regards to the city's affiliation with the mentioned person that created this packet. And I was told by Mr. Mayor that there was no affiliation other than, you know, a citizen in the community. And then I came to find out through public record that this was actually printed in the city office, which, fine, whatever, however you guys want to work that, you're entitled to do however you wish. However, it now involves me a little bit further because there's a dedicated page, which I have placed on the first page of that packet, that involves me defamation of my character and my business, along with the parent company that I work for. And so I want to just give you guys, really, I'm not going to go into, I know there's been a lot of talk about this packet, I'm really not going to focus too much on it. I hope that you guys take the time to read it and kind of see where things can get a little bit fishy in there. But I wanted to give you guys more information on Multi-Pure, the company that I work for. As I know that the last city council meeting, there was talks about possibly getting filtration into Satellite High School where we again just lost another young person to brain cancer. She was a 10th grader. And so on page two, you will find that there's contaminants reduced by multi-pure drinking water systems. And I want to just give a little history on Multi-Pure. We created the solid carbon block filter technology back in 1970. We were the first person to do this and we maintain the highest standards by NSF still to this day. And we are not a pyramid marketing scheme. We are very much so a network marketing model and we believe in uplifting the community at the same time protecting the community. I found it a little odd, and I'm going to speak directly to you, Mr. Mayor, that when you were asked about the packet in response, your verbatim response in writing was, "We assist in any way we can, including printing documents that residents send to us if we feel that these are necessary." This strikes a chord for me because we go way back, you know? My grandfather, my parents, your kids, everybody. So the fact, maybe you just didn't know this was me, I don't know. But that's pretty discerning to me as I would hope that, you know, my character wouldn't get involved with an affiliate company that would create such a mockery of what's been done here. Secondly, and I'm going to say, so in saying this, you're condoning the creation and dispersment of the letter. You are also disregarding the possibility of legal repercussions for not only yourself, Mr. Mayor, but by also directly in stating and writing that you believe this packet was necessary, but for everybody sitting on this panel. I don't think it was appropriate for the city to print something like this. We have lots of public facilities, like the library, where most people go to print documents. There's clearly more of a relationship here than just a person of the community. Moving on, you're going to find on page two, I'm going to tell you just a little bit about those carbon filters, like I said before, and that Multi-Pure created them. But what I want to get to is these rare forms of cancer, a lot of them popping up that have been talked about, are the breast cancer. And you will see here on the fourth denotion down that using a solid carbon block drinking water filter helps prevent likely breast cancer carcinogens. So as you discuss on your panel, potentially getting systems into your schools just as a way of preventing, again, I don't think that anybody's here wanting anybody on this panel to take accountability for things that they didn't do. But at some point in time, somebody's got to step up and say, "I want to change it. I want to help it. I want to better protect my community." And you guys have the opportunity to do that. Whether or not you do it is up to you. But, you know, I just, I was beside myself with that packet, the fact that I've never even met that woman, I haven't even had a conversation with her, I don't even know how my name got in there. Maybe it was just coincidence, she saw me on the affiliate page and decided she was going to attack me. I don't know. At the end of the day, I don't really sleep over it because I know my character and integrity of my company and what we stand for. But again, it's just alarming to me that the city printed this document for her and then by your own condition.
I said that and I, I don't think I said it in that.
Oh, yeah, you did. It was in writing.
In the contents of, I can tell you what I said.
No, I can't, too.
Could I talk to the people here? That we help people all the time that come to City Hall that have pertinent information that can help the city be a better place. And we help them in direction how they can go do it. Not necessarily do we do it for them, but we try to help them in ways to get information. I know we did it on the fluoride. We've had a few people come to us with information and we help them get their stuff to the appropriate authorities that handle that. And just like you talk about the school here.
Mm-hmm.
Much go to the school board because we have jurisdictions that we are not allowed to break, okay? We do not control the schools.
I don't think.
So what I'm saying to you is, this is good information. I don't think anybody is doubting what you're saying about the filters and how they can be a great asset to the school systems. I can't or this council cannot go to the schools and mandate them to put it in. We can help you and assist you to get to the school board, but they are the authority that controls the schools, not the city council.
I'm not standing in front of here stating that you're required or mandated or even have the control to do so. But it was discussed and then asked about at the previous meeting, what was it in regards to, you asked yourself, what would that cost, right?
Under my report, I was going to address how to do that.
And that's fine, again.
That's the thing, it's like, you know, we can, you know, we'd be glad to help, you know, but.
May I finish, though? Because I wasn't done speaking.
Your time, okay.
Yeah, but again, I mean, this is response, I think it's due diligence till I'm going to have the floor to speak. But again, you say that we assist in any way we can, include printing documents that residents send to us if we feel that these are necessary. And that was directly in response to this packet. And so at some point, you take a stand on stating that you believed this packet was necessary to print in a city building to then send out to a city resident. And, you know, somebody proofread that document.
I didn't say it about this particular packet. My comment is.
Either way.
The board, ma'am, about if anybody walked in the city hall, we try to be accommodating to them to help with what they are.
In the public records that were attached to that email, there's no front page that would block out anybody from seeing exactly what they were printing. I'm pretty sure that somebody would have read that document and said, "Hey, we probably don't want to get involved in this quorum between a city member and what's going on because you guys at that point in time had already had a lot of dealings with this company."
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Floor still open? Here are no further public comment. Citizens' comment portion. Move on to city council comments. Anybody like to start?
Sure. Two weeks ago, our, well, the mayor will probably speak about it, too, but the Marine Resources Council nominated our mayor for a conservation award. And we attended the event there to support him and sadly, he didn't win. He lost to Kurt Smith, which, you know, we can't complain. He had some tough competition. The other one was Debbie Mayfield. So, you know, three pretty, pretty good environmental people. It was a fundraiser, so there was a lot of interesting stuff there, raising money for the MRC and a lot of really good, interesting people. And then on Saturday of this past week, Courtney received an award, which I'll let her speak more about. We attended that event. And that's pretty much, oh, I, we ran the To Write Love on Our Arms race. It's a 5K that's been held here in Satellite Beach for several years. It'll probably be here next year. The gentleman that, it's basically set up to help deal with people with mental illness, depression, addiction, those types of things. And it's a local guy that went to school around here. It was a pretty well-attended race. I think they had 900 people. It was done worldwide, so they had virtual races going on all over the world. Ended up being about 2,800 people total, ran it, raised $78,000 for this particular, for helping out people with depression, helping them getting the help that they need. So, good cause, not cancer, but something that is equally rampant among our high school children. We had five children commit suicide last year alone at Satellite High School. The county total was 14. And so we were more than a third. So it's something that, it should be very important to all of us and supporting those type of events would definitely be beneficial in the future for all of you guys. And that's it.
Thank you. Moment.
The sixth Chief Brevard Beautiful did a beach cleanup in conjunction with Publix, our local Publix here. They had a great turnout. Publix does a great job in our community on various things that, you know, that we are involved in, the county's involved in. So that was a great event. Last night, the Lions Club had their annual fundraiser dinner at Pelican Beach Park where they cook and a lot of the proceeds that they derive from these fundraisers go back into the community in some form or another. The gazebo that we have outside here was donated to us by the Lions Club. So that was another great event. And tonight, I went to the Firehouse Subs, new opening in Indian Harbor Beach. Firehouse Subs has given the city of Satellite Beach two grants. One of them was for the altering vehicle that we use on our beach to do rescue and different things with. And the other one was for the Lucas equipment that they just provided for our fire department. So we have a great relationship with Firehouse Subs. They do an excellent job of working with first responders throughout the state of Florida.
No, $16,000.
It was $16,000.
$16,000.
So...
Thank you.
That's it.
Just a couple of things. I liked, Mindy just said that we would, I wanted to say, Frank, congratulations on your nomination.
Thank you.
It was a very nice event and you were in with a good group and represented the city very well. And we appreciate your efforts in regards to what you do for this council. So maybe even the Marine Resources Council, very much so. And Sunday night, attended a very nice event out at the zoo. And Ms. Parker was in some pretty high cotton there with some really nice, talented people. And congratulations on your award. It was just nice to see, about the whole video and just how everything rolled out. You've done a tremendous job since coming on board here. I know all of us appreciate your efforts and it's, it's been a real blessing to the city, so I just wanted to say thank you. But those two events really set our city pretty high and high up in the county realm. And we're just glad to have both of you guys doing what you're doing. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
I did all the same things that they did. Had all those down here. Again, congratulations to Frank.
Thank you.
Much deserved for both of you. I had the opportunity last night to go with, to the open house at the American Car, Muscle Car Museum. It was an event for first responders. And if you have never been before, if you ever get the chance, that is a really, really neat place. It's only open for charity events. It's not open to the general public ever. So they had a evening last night simply for first responders and food and could walk around and see all the really neat cars and it was a really neat event. So I know some of our Satellite Beach police and fire were there, too. So I'm glad that they opened that up last night.
Great. Thanks very much. My city manager, congratulations on the award. You do a spectacular job for us. Thank you for all your hard work as people and we knew how hard you worked, you added the hours you put in. And I appreciate all you do. And I was at the Firehouse also and congratulations, chief, to your crew and everything. Those grants are really great, keep them coming. And appreciate all you guys, what you do for us. Thank you. Any further council comments? Here are none. City attorney?
I don't have anything.
Thank you. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I just wanted to kind of respond to some of the...
Please.
Questions, I guess maybe you could call it, and public comment. Regarding the public records issue, we have had a lot of public records requests from a particular group. And I think the police department's used to dealing with records requests from, you know, state attorney's offices and attorneys. And so the, and a lot of that is, you know, confidential information, stuff like that. In this case, they're not used to these types of civil records requests. And we, we've changed policy to shift that over to the, our clerk's office. So that policy was changed based on this incident with Mr. Willman. I wanted to make sure that you knew that we were addressing that. We did get PD to go out and do more enforcement on the beach, so I think that's working out. I'm getting a lot of positive comments from the community about, you know, trying to arrest that issue because that, that has been an issue. Diane's not the only complainant on that and we preach, but we appreciate you bringing it forward because that you were kind of the impetus in getting, you know, additional patrols out there. I will look into the Google thing. I don't, Walker doesn't work for us. I don't, I don't think he's ever come here to a meeting, so I don't know if that's maybe me mentioning his name in a meeting or something. I, you know, I don't know, but we'll look into that. The other issue with this, the city, we print out things like, you know, water test results, stuff like that. But this is not something we said we ever printed. Things can get sent to us all the time and I can, just like email addresses can be sent to us. And, you know, the email address that, it was not a chain, it was an email that was sent to me. A public records request was made for that email that had that address in. And then somebody took that, compiled it into a package, and then somebody actually sponsored it throughout the city. So that's how that email address got out there. No action of mine. So I wanted, you know, to make sure that was out there. With regard to the water filtration systems, you know, our sustainability, we have a junior sustainability board in Delora and Satellite High School and they're working to get water bottle fillers at the schools and they're raising funds to do that. And they were talking about adding this carbon filter to that. And so, so what I'm trying to say is that these things are happening anyway. And if those are things that you all want to be involved in, you could let us know that. We would be happy to have more participation in those things. But the likelihood of people wanting to participate with a group that's constantly doing stuff like this is pretty slim. So I'm just trying to give some advice there, that, you know, a lot of people would be more willing to work on things with you when there's less animosity in statements like growing a pair and things like that at the, at the dais. So we are working on that and we'll be glad to do that. And I think if you had any ideas on how to get that done quicker or any particular filter systems, you know, we'll be glad to get, to work on that with you. But that is being done. And a lot of this stuff, you know, that people request, are, we're, we're doing a lot of it. Even, you know, you just may not know about it. So if you just ask, we could probably let you know what, what we're doing to, to solve some of those problems. That is true that we don't have control over the school system and that, I think that's one of the aspects that Councilwoman Rizicky is going to write about at the Beach Casters. That's one of the good things about the boards at the student levels, they're starting to learn how to work through the governmental system of the boards and how to get, you know, these things done, which is, you know, can be quite a process in the school system. But that's, that is being, you know, worked on. That's one way the city can work on that and that's something that we are trying to accomplish with the kids. So that's just, you know, my response to that. Satellite Beach Beautification and Sustainability Boards are going to host an annual garden and earth fair at the David R. Schechter Community Center on April 27th from 9 to 2. And this is a family-friendly outdoor fair that promotes nature and nurturing our environment while beautifying our surroundings. And so you'll see a lot of vendors showcasing garden-related projects or products, educational and educational displays. All of the funds raised during this period, during this event will be benefit city improvements. I received an email from Chief Pearson that he awarded Officer McCran, a letter of recommendation for his outstanding community service. So we're going to be recognizing him at our employee awards luncheon. And we also received an email from a resident regarding the work of our road crew headed by Scott Arnold. And this, Scott, we've received quite a bit of feedback from him, about him, so we're going to be talking or we're recognizing him as well tomorrow. We have, we were going to present an ADA policy for our websites and we're going to present that to you on May 17th. However, we figured, we went through the proposed policy and realized that this would be a staff-level policy, so we're going to complete that under a staff level scenario. But I did want to give you an update on what we are doing on that and that is for ADA compliance. We are, classes that are being offered by the county and as vacancies come available, we are sending the staff to those. And those are Word document one and two, Word compliant documents and proper formatting of Word documents, PDF compliance and methods for formatting documents so that they're not only compliant but easier and quicker to update. Adobe Acrobat Part One and Two, for those who work with those programs, compliance for Excel sheet training. We also posted an accessibility statement on the city website that identifies plans for achieving and ensuring accessibility on the website. The city's website company was contracted to bring the website into ADA compliance, updating and updating the whole website. And this was actually completed on April 10th. So that has been completed. The city designated an accessibility to electronic documents ADA coordinator. And we are currently looking for additional ADA classes for city staff. The challenge with this is that the DOJ has not outlined what this means, so we have to overdo everything. And I think, could you go ahead and tell them the amount of lawsuits that we just, the cities around Florida have received in the last couple of weeks?
Well, I know there were three that were filed yesterday for three different cities around the state.
By the same individual?
By the same individual. So it's about, it's about a dozen, no, I believe, around the state.
So it's a cottage industry at this point and so we just want to make sure that we're, we're in compliance. And then also, you know, we have, the biggest thing that we struggle with the cities is the backlog so, of documents that were basically our records. And, you know, and when we offer those to be accessible through the website, does that open us up to litigation on that, on that regard? Because there's no, we don't have the capacity to go and retrofit every past document that the city has. So, and I think we're just kind of waiting on around for guidance from DOJ on that, on how we can comply with that, you know, in that regard. Going forward is, is a simple and a fix, but it's the, it's the retrofitting that makes it difficult. I wanted to remind you that we have a employee awards luncheon tomorrow at 11:00. And after that, we have a Brevard County Commission workshop on the lagoon at 1:00. So if you're interested in that, I will be going, be attending that. And then also, I wanted to recognize the fire department for receiving a $16,000 grant for new equipment by Firehouse Subs. And I think you all went to the grant opening. And then because they've been so successful at obtaining all these grants, they applied for two more. They're non-matching grants and one is with ARP, the Community Challenge Grant. And this is to provide telehealth medical monitoring equipment to our community paramedic program participants. And then the second is hoods for heroes and this is the hoods that go underneath your helmets. Those hoods would, it's a grant just to get those actual hoods. So there's no real funding. It's, they deliver the actual hoods if we get, if we get the grant. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Questions for...
Yes, Sandy.
Yeah, thank you, Courtney. This time, we'll move on to Agenda Item 7. Discuss Take Action on Hiring a Part-Time Community Paramedic to Be Funded by the ALS Trust Fund. Chief?
Thank you. So since we're in this role with grants, it's, we're seeing we keep the momentum going good for the fire department. As you know, we have a very strong and positive, well-working community medic program. It's growing and so what I've done is I want you guys to be aware of what we're doing. Melanie's put down together a great presentation that kind of addresses kind of, in a little way, where we began, where we are and where we're going. And through that, you guys get a good idea of how well this program's going. So I'm going to let her do her thing and the hard work she's put in for us, so.
Good evening, council. My name is Melanie Drake. I am the lead community medic for the fire department. So I'm going to, like Chief said, just go a little bit over the program and then tell you where we are today. So program overview, we started this program in 2008, 2009, in line with the city's initiative, CEPALE, which is Communities for a Lifetime. So basically, we're trying to provide services to seniors to keep them happy, healthy and independent in their homes for longer and safer. During that time, we used fire department staffing on an overtime basis to fulfill that. We were currently visiting at that time, basically just our high-risk, multiple users of our 911 system. We were seeing them on a weekly basis and we had about 10 to 15 participants in that program. We were checking their vital signs and doing a basic health assessment. We also did fall prevention. This program was great because we went into seniors' homes, we were able to identify safety risks, go and help them through local resources, install grab bars, ramps, look for hazards in the house. And we were able to help mitigate some of our 911 fall-related events. In 2015, we added a full-time position for, to run the program. The program has grown since then. We're currently now seeing about 140 to 160 participants a month, so it's really, really grown. The goal of the program is to link residents with available community resources and to help them learn how to monitor their own health to create overall wellness. We do have lots of community partners to get these needs met. We don't just do it ourselves. Some of the community partners we have are with Volunteers in Motion. It's a, through Space Coast Area Transit, it's free transportation for seniors, for doctor's appointments and groceries, which is huge. And so we focus on a patient-centered approach, the resident in the middle, with all the different things that make them whole and happy and safe around them. So we follow up with all of our 911 calls. We do that for better customer service and also to explain the program. And if they need it, they're more than welcome to enroll. Referrals come from family members, the resident themselves, and from other community health partners. We also, with the program, conduct free public educational workshops multiple times throughout the year in the city, at the rec department, the civic center. And some of those workshops are Matter of Balance, which is fall prevention, diabetes self-management, and the Healthy Living Workshop. And these workshops are eight to six weeks long and they're free to all the residents. Some of the services that we provide on our home visits are listed here. We do basic health and physical assessments and we help link the patient to the right services and kind of monitor their health. We also help with discharge coordination. So if one of our residents does go into the hospital, we're able to help them transition back into the home after their hospital visit or rehab stay easier, making sure that they have everything they need. So we're trying to reduce, reduce those unavoidable readmissions. Right now, the program runs with myself, a full-time community medic, and we're doing a voluntary overtime basis within our current level staffing. The challenges with this is, you know, it's voluntary, so it's an ebb and flow in how we get that staffing. So that's why I kind of, you want to bring it to your attention that, you know, to run this program at this level, we, we really need a dedicated person. Oops, I'm going the wrong way. Sorry. Oops, I'm going the wrong way, sorry. So currently, we have created a partnership with Care Advantage. Care Advantage is a nurse practitioner group, and their main goal is to do doctor home visits. So they do urgent care visits, and we've partnered with them for residents who don't get out of the home, don't have a primary care doctor, and all those barriers that can't be addressed, we can get a doctor in to see them. That program also enables us to be able to bill for our monthly visits that we do currently, which is great. It helps revenue for the program and helps create sustainability to be able to provide that program for more people. Again, this is a list of services. I just want to point on this one, our partnership with Care Advantage is, really opens up the doors for patients to be able to get prescriptions in the home, in-home labs, x-ray monitoring, all those urgent care issues we can provide right there in the home. Program growth, like I said, we're constantly enrolling new people. I get calls every week, you know, "Can I be in your program?" Or, "My mom lives in the city of Satellite Beach, I live out of state, you know, I really would like you to keep an eye on her." So basically, our needs would be to have a dedicated, part-time person to help with that level of patient load that we're really getting. So any questions or comments?
I do. I want to say thank you to you very, very much.
Oh, thank you.
I know the work you put into this and the job you guys are doing throughout the community. It makes a better community, it makes a better place to live, and you guys, oh, you do an incredible job. And to all you guys, thanks.
Thank you.
It's amazing. Questions for on the program?
I have a comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to say, you know, having only gotten involved a couple of years ago, one of the things that I don't know for the public, how well you guys are aware of what this program does. I mean, it's pretty amazing, and I had no idea. And I've talked to people just, you know, since I've learned about it and explained to them, these things are available to them, and it's all, it is, it's about sustainability. We always talk about sustainability, and people think of the green aspect of it, but it's to be sustainable. Aging in place is so important, and having the ability for people to have a place to go and not leave their homes. I mean, you know, they're going to be dragging me out of my house by my hair. You know? I just, I think it's amazing, and you have grown it, and it's just, you've done an amazing job, and it's so impressive, all of you guys, and I'm so supportive of you, so.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I know, and you know who I'm talking about, but there's been a person that's been in this program almost since its inception, and I think the quality of life that she has now, because she's still helping somebody else now at 80 years old, but she would not be where she is today if it was not for this program, because this program helped stabilize her after she came out of the hospital and helped rehabilitate her to be able to do the things that she's doing today for other people at 80 years old. So, you know, Mark, this was part of your, you know, staying in place, aging in place, fall prevention stuff, and you guys have taken this to the next level. I mean, I travel around the state with the Florida League of Cities at different meetings, and I talk to other people from other cities about what we're doing in Satellite Beach and how successful this program is, and they're looking to copy us on so many different things that we've done. The Sustainability Board, the Community Medic Program now. There's other cities that want to do what we're doing, and this is, as Mindy said, we're allowing people to age gracefully in their homes. So thank you so much. I know you and Eric, you know, kind of were instrumental in starting all this, and I think we need to do whatever we need to do to keep this moving in that direction.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Very, very well done. This has gotten so much bigger than what we started with years ago. It's just incredible how far you've taken this. And when I say this is kind of out of the box, what you've done, it's way out of the box what you've done. I mean, you and your team, all of you folks have done a beautiful job with this. Because you look at somebody 72 years of age, and if they go into an assisted living facility, even locally, it's six grand a month. And a lot of these people don't even have six grand with nickels to rub together, they just don't have it. So, you know, what Mindy was saying about staying at home and aging in place and all that, it's huge, because some of these places, folks just don't have any place to go, they just have nothing. And, you know, you look at the AARP data, and this is going to be a bigger problem as this population continues to age, the baby boomers, so.
That's us.
That's, well, it's at least frank anyhow.
It's definitely frank.
But I just, I just think it's kind of neat. You know, you don't know the economic cost that you're saving some of these people that are still allowed to stay home. I mean, you can't measure that, somebody who, just because of what you've done, catch a congestive heart failure early versus having to be admitted to an assisted living facility where they never get out. So that's, that's the, that part of the cost that you can never capture what you did, but you know you're doing it because you're keeping them there. So congratulations to you guys. Dave, wonderful job. Thank you, guys, for all you've done to make this happen.
Thank you very much.
The program was fairly new to me, sorry. But I helped to deliver Meals on Wheels over spring break, and we delivered to five or six people in Satellite Beach, and more than half of them are also your customers, or whatever. And they just spoke so highly of the program and were, you know, they couldn't have stayed home without that program. And a lot of, you know, questions, I was just asking them, the support that you give, the directions that you, you know, "Check out this workshop," or "Try this class," or "Go to the Schechter Center for the 55 and Up Club," and "We can get a ride to get you there," and so I think that's pretty amazing.
Awesome, thank you.
Someday I'm going to be an old lady here and need your help.
Now we're after it.
Just real quick, because I thought, so just one more, two things I wanted to say. So the one thing was, I do recall, and I might be incorrect, but this isn't just for aging in place, this is, don't you guys help shut-ins too, and people that have, like, mental illnesses and agoraphobia, that type of stuff, that might not actually ever get out? So it's broader than just aging in place, right?
We've helped a few, actually a few children as well that have serious medical issues. I mean, it's more few and far between, more, we focus on the older, but we're here for whoever.
After surgery, hospital, we do, things like that?
Yes.
And what about, I remember at some point hearing a statistic about the 24-hour, I don't know if you delved into that too much, about when they get out of the hospital, the, there were some really significant numbers.
So within seven to 14 days out of discharge is the highest risk of them returning to the hospital from complications. So that's really the time to, you know, capture getting the services in that are going to help them.
Do we have a number for, like, how many people we have? It's hard to say if they would have gone in, but have we seen a decrease in people turning around since we started this?
We did a little study a while ago, and we took all the residents and the patients in the program, and we took from when they first came in, which was usually initiated by a 911 call, and then tracked them for 90 days after birth. So the county average is 19% for readmissions. In Satellite Beach, it was 10 to 12%.
I think that's the number I remember hearing. That's good.
Yeah, and I think, you know, part of the reason why we have this request here is not just the growth of the program, but because we need to relieve them. I mean, like Melanie and some of the other staff, they live and breathe this program. Sometimes I, you know, I see Mel, she lives down the street from me, and I have, we have to tell her, "Don't answer the phone on weekends," you know, because that's what, you know, that's their passion, but they still have to have a break, you know, and part of this is not just to help grow the program, but also to help, the growth has overwhelmed them, and they need that, you know, assistance. And then, and we also would like to get the data, you know, and that's something they don't have time for, you know, so it's stuff like that, and that's, those are the reasons why we're, you know, we think that we can ramp it up with the billing that we can do, and even if we couldn't do that billing, we'd still be here recommending this, just for the, just for our residents.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open up, if you would, we have some questions, Doran, the public comment. I'll call on you, thank you. At this time, open up for public comment on this item.
Dale Abrams, CRA resident. I've been doing Meals on Wheels for 12 years. Is this just for Satellite Beach residents?
Yes.
At this point.
Okay, at this point.
At this point. So right now, we, so Brevard County has a community paramedic, they do what I do, but there's one person for the entire county. So I do get calls from people outside the city that request us to come out, you know, go say, "Oh, my friend has this, can I have that?" Up until the past few years, and even now, so Brevard County just got their community medic a few years ago that's active. Before that, I would do a one-time courtesy call or visit to somebody outside the city and let them know the services that they can do, but after that, I couldn't keep visiting them. So now I refer that to the community paramedic for the county, unless they're enrolled in our program and were able to obtain payment for seeing them, then we will continue to see them outside the county, outside the city.
Outside of the city?
Outside the city.
Okay.
As long as there's a payment there.
Right.
And this is, this is people on Medicare and Medicaid?
Correct.
Medicare. Okay, okay, so they have to, they would have to go through some qualifications. Okay, is there a flyer that you have that could be passed out? Because I have access to a lot of seniors after doing Meals on Wheels for 12 years, and I'd like to be able to, you know, share that information. And then I think since, I believe Chief Hughes started this, I do remember, and I think the city should get into the consulting business and go out and consult all these other municipalities about this program and charge some fees for it.
We do get asked to speak a lot about this program. I present a lot about it, and so does Melanie.
I mean, it's something to think about, since you're the only, we're the only ones that are doing it in the county. Create a consulting avenue and get out there and do it in such a way that it covers the cost for an additional employee to implement this program. And then the other thing is, is thus, you're very, you're correct in saying, you need data. Data and analysis is very important, okay? So I, like I said, I've been doing Meals on Wheels for 12 years, and there are lots of people out there that do need assistance, and I think you guys work with Meals on Wheels.
Absolutely.
And, yeah.
Aging Matters.
Aging Matters, yeah, okay. Because I know Aging Matters does provide grab bars and other entities for free for people, as far as that's concerned. And I remember when Chief Hughes came up with this telemedicine stuff, which, and I did research on the company that you were dealing with regarding that, and we're going to see more and more of that going into the future, so. Where can I get some of this information? At the fire department?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
The mic's still open? If I'd like to speak on this agenda item?
Yes, my name's Linda Cash. I don't live here, but I'm spending more and more time with my mom, who lives in Satellite Beach on Jamaica Boulevard. I live in Colorado, and I actually, about a year and a half ago, quit my job mainly because I knew my mom would need me here more. So I come for four to five weeks at a time, several times a year, but she doesn't want to move to Colorado, and she wants to stay in her home. And she just celebrated, we celebrated her 91st birthday just this past Saturday. And she still drives, excuse me, she still drives a little bit, and she's living alone, and she's mostly okay, except she's not, because she's been losing weight, and, you know, the things that happen when people are just there alone a lot more. So I was, we were introduced to this program in January when she fell. I happened to be right beside her when that happened, and couldn't believe it, it just happened so fast, and I didn't know what to do, to take her to urgent care, and we'd sit there for 20 hours or whatever. And so Bud Myers had given my mom, they moved into their neighborhood, however, 60, you know, a long time ago, and he had given her this little, he had made it, this little placard with the telephone number for these guys, and we, I put it up on our wall, which he was never going to call it, but I was there, and I called it because I didn't want to go through this other process. And they came out, and this was just in January, and this is how we were introduced to this program, and it is phenomenal. I live in Colorado, I'm a physical therapist who did home care for the past 25 years, and believe me, this is unique. There's nothing that I've ever run across like it. And I was so happy, because I don't live here, to have some support. I just went with my mom to her physician, and that wasn't very much support at all. In fact, I, it was terrible. I won't go into details, but there was no support there. We weren't asked any questions, we were just given a lecture about, "She's 91, she shouldn't be living at home, she shouldn't be driving anymore, she needs to go out and get a walker," and all these things. So this is such positive support, and the fact that it's there, and I'm still learning what, because I've not run into anything that's, you know, in any of my communities, I did home care all across the Denver metro area, and there's just nothing like this. We went in, I myself, as a physical therapist, it's after some, something terrible has happened usually, and it's skilled care, and it's very limited, and then unless you can get families involved more, anything, the communities, you know, don't have anything like this. So I'm just so happy because I think she doesn't want to move to Colorado, she doesn't want to go anywhere else, it's like you said, she wants to stay in her home, and it's possible with this program versus, it's nothing like that was there, so.
Thank you, thank you very much. Public comments still open? There are no further? Back to council?
We'll make a motion to approve to hire a part-time community medic to be funded by the Advanced Life Support Trust Fund.
A motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Breimer. Further discussion from council?
I just want to ask one question. You know, when we talk about going out of the city, you know, it's great, I think, if we're, you know, in South Patrick Shores or in Indian Harbor Beach, and if they're funding us to some extent, I'm okay with that. I don't want to see us go too much farther than, we're not doing this to make money, we're doing this for quality of life for people that are close to our community.
It's not unlike mutual aid, you know, and we, that's why we do not.
And that's kind of the way I would look at it, you know, I mean, we do have mutual aid with the county and Indian Harbor Beach, and I'm comfortable with that, and if that's what we're looking at, I'm okay. I don't want to go to Melbourne, I don't want to be going to Viara.
Our primary focus is the residents of Satellite Beach, hands down.
And when we call the county, they come out and do whatever they need, you know, we need, so, you know, I mean, it's similar.
You know, we get, as Melanie says, we get that occasional call from somebody out there, it might even be a relative or a friend of somebody that's in the community, and we'll go, and like Melanie says, she does an assessment, we may, Westfayet. We dealt with his dad on quite a few visits, and now he's going into assisted living. So we'll manage that for a short period of time, it's not intended to be a long-term engagement by us with any other residents except Satellite Beach.
But when you look at Jim Fayet, he's been a member of this community, it's been everything from, when I first moved here, I knew who Jim Fayet was, so.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second further. If you're not.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Zinkie?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
And Mayor Pateen?
Yes, motion passes. Well, thank you, guys, very much. Moving on to Agenda Item 8. Discuss Take Action on Approving Piggybacking on a State Contract with DEX Imaging for Copiers.
Good evening, councilmembers, and I just wanted to let you know that I am currently attending a fire happy tree. All those members involved have engraved on their name when we die. The chief is telling me this is going to go for another, like, six weeks, or the next thing, eight, so I don't want to be sure, I don't have any chance, right? So, anyway, I just want to hear that.
As long as you don't kill the dummy that Courtney and I killed already.
Ours didn't even leave, we didn't even get it out of the building, so, just, you know.
Died unfortunately.
John Stone and I are a team, that sounds funny.
There's definitely a good reason for me not to go into the fire business and go into city manager business. Nobody wants to be pulling them out of a burning building.
Especially, right.
So, councilmembers, tonight, I have two requests. One is to consider an agreement with DEX Imaging to provide copiers to call our city departments, and to have piggybacking on the State Forest Contract, number 600, article 1. And the whole of signing the agenda item, it kind of explains why we're trying to provide this agenda item. Basically, we have seven agendas, four different contractors, four different contract terms and conditions, different costs, you know, that piggybacking into the state contract that applies. over five years, guarantee that with price. Dex Contract, we contacted them to see what they would do for us by consolidating contracts and then buying out existing contracts. And they came up with, as you saw in your, in your agenda, the matrix of the savings that they could show us, even by buying out the existing contract. So, after we got this, we thought, well, let's check with our existing vendors, you know, to get them the same opportunity, to see what they could do for us, but unfortunately, they couldn't compel us to the cost savings, to quality of copiers, additions, bells and whistles for the new copiers, so not to belabor. This state contract, that was formerly competitively bid, Dex is going to be able to do the pickup and shipping of the existing equipment, which in itself, as you can imagine, you know, is going to be done in itself. They'll pay off remaining vendors, we're going to be consolidating the billing. Of course, there's a guarantee, a price guarantee for the state contract, and, I mean, it goes on and on, but the one nice thing with this contract as well, is they decided to consider a business, which they would provide a large printer at no cost, other than the printing, and the printer will enable us to do posters, maps, things that we currently spend to print what that costs. So, we'll be able to do some of that in-house. One of the printers, for instance, in personal recreation, we'll be able to give them a holding option, as well as lining, other than they copy, which things are amazing, learn more about copies. But that also will cut costs and set things out for printer, it can do more things in-house. So, with that said, we are discussing the two approvals, and at the end of the day, it's a sixty-month contract with Dex, and by doing this consolidation, we'll leave over almost $25,800 savings to the city.
Thank you. So, basically, it's almost, it's eight grand for the sixty-month, that's what we're doing. Correct?
Eight grand or?
Eighty thousand dollars, excuse me.
That's correct. The total lease, yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve awarding the citywide copier lease agreement to Dex Imaging to provide multifunctional copiers to all city departments, and to piggyback on the State of Florida contract, 600, 000, 111.
Second.
And a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Councilwoman Gibson. Further discussion from?
Question. Forgive me if it's in here. I read, it's a fairly local company?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so.
We have a copier.
So, if a copier goes down, somebody can be there quick to, because nobody wants, everything stops with a broken copier. Okay.
It drives me crazy.
Yeah.
I have a history.
Making sure they weren't having to travel from another, you know, Jacksonville or?
I have a temper tantrum, like, every other day with that printer.
This is my first, you know, to get, to make sure the city manager's.
Yes.
Question.
I just, just a comment, because I always have a comment. This is one of those really great places of going in and trying to find savings for, and it's these little things, I mean, it's $24,000, that's, that's a good amount of money that we're going to see savings, so kudos for you guys for finding it and finding a local, I'm all about local business, so thank you for supporting a local business, and good job. I'm cool.
And I was going to kind of say the same thing. You guys have been doing a great job of finding little things that amount to big dollars at the end of the day, and this is another example of that, so thank you.
Thank you. At this time, open up for public comment on Agenda Item Eight.
Diane Douglas, I just have a question. There's no penalty for ending the computer?
No, it's just a file, there is a key contract, so it's not a penalty, you just have to file the contract, and then that gets forwarded to existing contract, and even with all of that, you still see a savings of $1,000 with upgraded copiers.
All right. Okay. Cool. Thanks.
Further comments? Here are none. Bring it back to council. Further comments from council? Here are none.
Councilwoman Rosicky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you. And what is it supposed to?
We'll see if we find a contract tomorrow, and we'll go.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to Agenda Item Ten. Thank you for waiting. Discuss Take Action on Agreement with the Satellite Beach United Methodist Church for Installation of a Playground for Public Use. Courtney?
Thank you, Mayor. So, as you recall, we have been working on relocating Public Works to the Jackson Avenue property, and we're getting ready to start that design. As part of that, we have the site of Public Works area, and on Cinnamon, you have a tot lot, with the cinnamon tot lot, and then behind the Public Works Department, in kind of tucked behind Olson Field, is another playground. And that playground needs to be replaced. So, the plan that we are currently operating under, and it's what we presented to you, I would say about eight months ago, was to combine those playgrounds and to move the tot lot over and just get rid of that Olson Field playground. Because of that, we would be losing a playground, which, from a maintenance standpoint, we're not all that upset about, but from a use standpoint, we do have an area of the city that really doesn't have any public playgrounds, and that's the area from Cinnamon to Jackson. And when we did the partnership with Surfside, and then we also did the partnership with Satellite High School, we were opening up some of these facilities to the public at no maintenance cost to us, we just have that capital cost, which a lot of schools, PTOs, and churches have a hard time raising, although they can keep up the daily maintenance, it's hard to get that capital cost, which is something that we're usually good at, but really bad at maintenance. So, it's a great partnership, even the growth management laws actually recommend co-locating recreational facilities with public, other public agencies, and, and the church is definitely a different avenue, but they do, literally, the function is the same thing. Because it's not a government agency, we did create an agreement. The church is okay with that agreement, and it does have a payback standard in case they want out of the agreement, and it amortizes every period of time. It requires them to keep it open to the public, and we, then we also ask for a sign, and of course, we want to do a little ribbon cutting, if it's approved, but we think it's a great partnership. It gives a public, a public space and amenity without a lot of maintenance, obviously, no maintenance to the city in an area that we haven't had those facilities before. So, so that's it. That's, we've been, we negotiated the agreement, the church seems to be okay with the agreement, and the, basically, the church would need to keep it closed during their preschool days, which is Monday through Friday, from eight to two, and then after that, it would be open to the public, of course, it'd be open to the public all the weekend, and then it would be open to the public in the summertime all day, because they follow the same school schedule as the Bubbar County schools.
Great. You know, I think it's a great idea, for a lot of reasons. That church has really been great, helped the Satellite High School, and a lot of events that are happening there, and they're very community-oriented.
Hurricane support, too.
Yeah, the hurricane support. Were you learning to cook?
I did.
And I just think it's a great, a great thing. The parking there, I mean, I know we had some track meets that were kind of full, but you guys do a great job for us, so I'm very much in favor. Discussion from council? Sorry to hog it.
I just, you know, I mean, Pastor Joe was there, and he, you know, was our chaplain for police and fire departments, and, you know, Pastor Holman, you're there now, and, you know, you've been great community partners all through all of this, so we're, I'm thrilled that you guys are willing to take this on and be partners with us in this. And I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with the Satellite Beach United Methodist Church to co-locate a playground on their property that will be open to the public.
Second.
And a motion by Vice Mayor Breimer, second by Councilwoman Gibson. At this time, open up for public comment on Agenda Item Ten.
Diane Douglas, what age is the playground for? Or, that hasn't been discussed, the details aren't there, or has it?
No, they have a playground specifically picked out in part of the agreement.
It's little. Oh, all right. It's little.
Ten, I'm sorry, say that again? Two to twelve? Okay. Two to twelve.
Is there, and I don't know, this is off the subject, but is there a problem with swings? You know, like a safety hazard?
We don't like them, not, I mean, we don't have a problem with them, but they're very, because they're metal link, they run a beach, run a beach, and they just disintegrate very quickly.
Yeah. I just wanted to, because on the previous presentation, they were talking about health, and then I started thinking about it, and the yoga, and all those with the cap cow of the spine, and I'm like, oh, my gosh, that's swinging! You know? And you're stretching out, you're sitting, so I just wanted to tout the health benefits of swings, even though we do have them.
We do have a machine at the DeSoto Park that does very similar activities.
Oh, all right, yeah. I'm going to get over there. Yeah, I'll check that out. Okay. Thanks. But if you should do adult swings.
Slinger.
I would, I would.
Slinger.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comments still open?
Terry Holman, the pastor at Satellite Beach United Methodist Church, and just, our heart is, my heart is, and the church has been one that likes to be involved in the community. And my goal, when I quit my job as an engineer, was to say, I didn't quit my job to be a chaplain, I quit my job to go into communities and make a difference. And one of the things that always struck me, someone said, "How do you know your church is successful?" And people always think, you know, your membership's going up, things like that, and one person said, "You know your church is successful when the crime rate goes down in your neighborhood, and the suicide rates go down in your community." And that's the things we're dealing with, and that's why I want to be a partner in any way we can, and our facility, because of its prime location, is used a lot. Yes, track meets have been quite challenging, and we have provided people there, but any way we can partner, this, the playground equipment that we're providing has a handicap accessible section to it, I think it'll handle something like sixty kids at a time, but not many, I don't think will ever show up. But they use it already, I mean, and we don't kick them off, I never kick anybody off our property, so I just thank you for the consideration.
Thank you. Public comment? Still open? Here are no further. Bring it back to council. I have a motion and a second, so any further?
Just, I think it's great. I have small children, and I live on Sherwood, and they do go to the Cinnamon, but I want, I grew up riding my bike two to three miles away from my house, and exploring woods, and playgrounds and things like that, so it'd be cool for them to be able to venture a little further out of the neighborhood, considering we live in the safest city in the state, so we don't really have to worry about the crime. And, yeah, thank you. Thank you for partnering with us. I think it's a great thing, it'll be good. My kids will love it.
Thank you.
I wish my kids had this playground when they were at preschool, so this is going to be great, and I'm glad it'll be open to the public as well.
Great. Any further?
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rosicky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
And Mayor Patino?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you for the partnership, we appreciate it. Moving on to a giant, Agenda Item, excuse me, eleven, Proposed Regular Meeting on, but look at the date, May fifteenth, we do not have one on May first.
Oh, okay.
Now, remember, these are proposed, and a packet can change at any time. If you, again, like what we say, if there's something you would like on the agenda, please see our city manager. We get on to Agenda Item Twelve, Approval of Minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the city council regular meeting minutes from April third, twenty nineteen. Is that it? That's it?